All right.
I get to look back on here because I don't have it on my screen in front of me, so. That's you, Stephen.
Yep, that's great.
All right, well, we will call this meeting to order at six thirty nine P. M. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Bonkriks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Cabo Waden.
Present.
Ait.
Here.
Perugee.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So here we'll kick off the public hearing by reading the notice here. A public hearing will be held by the City Council in the council chambers at Trenton City Hall and twenty eight hundred third Street, Trenton, Michigan at six thirty P. M. on Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty three, on the adoption of the proposed city budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. The property tax mileage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be a subject of this hearing. A regular meeting will be held by the City Council immediately following the budget hearing on Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty three, to consider formal adoption of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal year budget. Public participation for the public hearing and regular meeting is available in person or virtually via Zoom. Copies of the Trenton proposed budget and the three preceding fiscal budget will be on file in the Trenton City Clerk's office from eight thirty A. M. to five o'clock P. M. in the city library during regular business hours beginning April fourth, twenty twenty three, for examination by interested citizens and taxpayers. The proposed budget is also available for viewing on the city website at www.trentonmi.org. For more information, please call the City Clerk's office at seven three four six seven five eighty six hundred. So now open up the public hearing for public comment. We'll go to any comment in first, followed by those on the Zoom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak, please use the raise hand feature under either reactions or participants. But as to anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address. Direct all questions through me at the chair, and please limit your comments to five minutes. See if I turn my head around now. No hands on Zoom, no comment in public. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered for adjournment at six forty one P. M.
I'm not gonna make the walk.
Here's our favorite reporter. Not sure how this is, if it's coming through right there, but whatever, it works on the screen. So if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call this meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Kriks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kibwattin.
Present.
Pate.
Here.
Perugee.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rosetta.
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rosetta.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have on the agenda is a minute approval from the May 1st, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, next up, we have the Trenton High School Class of 2023 Top 10 Presentation here. If we could get a motion to make this part of the regular meeting. All right. Seeing any further discussion, or no further discussion, unanimously so ordered. All right. Come out front here. How are y'all? So I was not part of the top 10. I wasn't super good at math, but it does seem like there's less than 10 of you here. Well, I do have some certificates here, and what we will do is I'll just call you up. We've got in order, and I know council would like to shake your hands. Thank you, congratulate you on that good stuff as well. But if you could come up and then we'll have you introduce yourself to everyone, introduce your family or anyone that may be here with you today. And of course, answer the question you've all been asked like 250 times over the last six months and are going to continue for the next few months. It's just what are you doing after graduation and all that cool stuff. So first, we have here the 10th ranked in the class, Ms. Kayla Kirkland. I'll give that to you, and if you want to introduce yourself and your family.
Hi, I'm Kayla Kirkland. My family's over there. I have my mom, my sister, and my dad, and I'm going to Michigan State University.
That's all right, we won't hold it against you, but thank you. I'm a Michigan grad myself, but yeah, all my best friends out there. If you want to hang out up here just until we go through this, then we'll go to everyone else. I know Mr. Gabriel Push wasn't able to make it tonight, but we'll make sure we get that sent out. Do we have Ms. Nina Lomas here? Throwing elbows here.
Hi, I'm Nina Lomas. I brought my mom, my granny, and my Aunt Karen right over there. After school, I'm going to Wayne State University.
Congratulations. We have Hilaou Humadine here. Hoop done. Oh, my pleasure. There you are, sir.
My name's Hilaou Humadine. I brought with me my love me mom, and I'll be attending Wayne State after graduation.
We have Ava Carson here. Okay, she doesn't like us, we get it.
Big soccer game tonight.
All right, I'm teasing. Do we have Enrique Alcantara here? Yeah, my pleasure. There you are.
Hi, I'm Indika Alcantara. I brought my really supportive parents here, my mom and my dad. I'm going to University of Michigan Ann Arbor, and I'm not sure what I'm going to study, but I'm going into the College of LSA. Thank you.
Go Blue. Do we have Carter Allen here?
Hi, I'm Carter Allen, and my mom's over there, Tracy, and I'll be going to the U of M, U of M Dearborn.
Malia Sarkody. Congratulations, girl. Of course, there you are.
Hi, I'm Malia Sarkody. My family's over there, and I have my aunt, my mom, my Mimi, and my Papa, and I'm going to Wayne State.
We have Nolan Diroff here. All right. Hi, Mr. Diroff. And if we could get Mayor Pro Tem Pate here to join me for this one. We have, in this case, last but certainly not least, given he is a valedictorian, would like to bring up Mr. Carl Pate.
My name's Carl Pate. This is my mom. She's the mayor pro tem. She's pretty cool. I'm attending the University of Michigan Ann Arbor's College of Engineering after graduation.
Well, one last round of applause for you all. I know council would like you, if you don't mind going around just to shake your hand. Plus, the love of snow can mean anything to you, so appreciate it. Yep, of course.
There's a bunch on there.
They're going that way. Whichever. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Carter.
Wow, so exciting.
So proud of you guys.
Yeah, definitely. Hey, Ron, you could have proxy and gone and stood in line with the rest of them. Talk favorable about his dad. Take care, everyone.
Bye, congratulations.
Of course.
No, they already, the work got out.
They've seen, they've watched it before.
Good night. Good job, guys.
Oh, it's post, I don't have it printed out, but it's on the agenda. All righty, well, that cleared it out real quick. All right, now that was very cool. So next up here, we have, let me just get my agenda in order. There we go, it's being tricky. All right, we've got public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we have reserved exclusively for items that are on today's agenda, and we'll have another opportunity for all other public comment towards closing the meeting. Ask that anyone wishing to speak, we'll go to those in person first, and then those on the Zoom. If you are interested in speaking on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature found either under participants or reactions. We'd ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begins with their name and address, that they limit their comments to five minutes, and direct all questions through me, so. Ms. Dingell, we'll let you take it away first here.
Good evening to the council, and thank you for everything that you do. My name is Cindy Dingell. I live at 3360 Brookshire Street in Trenton. I'm here tonight for the animal control ordinance, and I want to thank you for taking action, especially Councilwoman Pate, who listened to myself and Robin Brown about all the issues that we have on a day-to-day basis. We're just trying to be good citizens and walk our dogs and get left alone. I have had numerous trips to the vet with my dogs. Same dogs keep coming after them. On my 10th incident with one set of them. The last one was not good. It punctured, put puncture wounds into my, one of my dogs, and now it's just a nightmare to try to walk him anywhere. I do foster and rehabilitate dogs. I've done this for 18 years. Sadly, I'm on my last one because I can't even walk out my front door without having an issue with dogs across the street coming after us because they're not contained. I do work with animal control. I make a report each time this happens. But I do commend the ordinance, and I like to see that there's a little bit more, don't want to put it mildly, but teeth in it for the vicious dog portion of it. I would really love to see tickets issued in a manner that if there is a bite, be it human or another animal, go directly to the district court. There's no reason why I should have to track somebody down to pay a vet bill and then be told that if I want to get reimbursed, I have to take that person to small claims court. It would be good to just have some type of way that to go after these through the court system if folks refuse to pay the bill, if it's human or dog. And I'd say that that should possibly happen even on the first time, if it is something along those lines. I know that Woodhaven is moving in that direction as well. Our animal control officers do the best that they can, but they're only as good as the ordinances that are written to mandate what they do. Ordinances are only good if they're enforced. So, you know, anything that can happen here to make it a little easier, I don't want any trouble. I leash my dogs. I license them in the city. They're up to date on everything. I will not be fostering dogs anymore again because I don't feel that I can go out my front door, you know, in a safe manner. With my two, I'm fine with, but bringing one in has just been, it's been a nightmare, and it's been like this for over 10 years, and it seems to be getting worse. And being told to walk my animals elsewhere, that's really not the solution. Where am I supposed to go? I try walking the school at night. I've tried walking parking lots at night, and the same things just keep happening over and over. So I commend you for trying to do something to fix this issue, and it's a pleasure to be part of the city. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy. We appreciate that.
Hi, I'm Robin Brown, 2708 Gorno, and just to follow up, I agree with everything Cindy said, but my experiences are a little different because we didn't even leave our yard. From the time my dog was four months old till he was two and a half, nine attacks in his own yard by the neighbors behind us, jumping the two different fences to get into his yard, and animal control and the police department did nothing. And he was my certified service dog to the state of Michigan, but now because of these attacks, and he is and he's reactive to other dogs, and I don't blame him, I can't use him for what he was bred for because if we are out and he reacts, I could get in trouble, and it's not his fault. Animal control has done nothing nine times. The last time they came, the dogs were literally going The last time they came, the dogs were literally going at my dog through our storm door on the front porch. Nothing happened. Nothing. I have a list of tasks that, in the certified state, from the state of Michigan for his registration. If you want to see those, what he does do, what he's registered to do, but he can't do any of it anymore. So the laws have been bad for a really long time, and I think 10, nine attacks by the same two dogs in our own yard, which is privacy fenced in, something should have been done. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you both very much, and obviously. Alrighty. Thank God, seeing no further public comment, we will move right along here. Next up, we have, under authorities, commissions, and boards, resignation from the civic commission from Ms. Angela Tank. If we could get a motion to receive and place this on file and send her a letter thanking her for her service to the community. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Next up, we will go to our department heads and officials, and the first we have tonight is Ms. Saul, our controller here for four different items. So first up, fiscal year budget beginning July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Okay, I will try to make this painless. Thank you, ma'am. So we are proposing a millage rate of 24.7506, covering the fiscal year July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. This will be based on the assessment roll signed by the Board of Review on March 24th, 2023. This includes 18.5115 for operating millage, 2.654 for sanitation, 2.8935 for ACT 345 pension system, .4310 mills for the library, and .7495 for the sewer debt millage. In this budget resolution, there is the general fund for 23 million, $23.9 million, and that's the only one I'm going to read, and then all the rest are there for your approval.
So moved. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Karen. Next up, we'll go to, from, next from our city controller, the millage tax rate.
Tax one is exactly like the budget. It's just the same numbers over again, so it will cover the same time period and the same millages.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, and safe to note, same millage rate as last year.
Yes, or one less.
Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next up, we have the water and sewer rates from the controller.
So, yes, this year, the millage, the water rate will be 6.41 per thousand gallons. The sewer rate will be 6.84 per mil, per hundred, I'm sorry, per thousand gallons, for a total of 13.25 per thousand gallons. That is an increase of 49 cents.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Last but certainly not least, resolution, resolution authorizing the issuance of 2023 capital improvement bonds.
Thank you, mayor. This resolution authorizes the issuance of bonds in the amount not to exceed $1,135,000 to pay cost of acquiring a garbage truck, a loader truck, and repairs to the city swimming pool. The resolution was prepared based on bond specifications. The city will secure a limited tax, full faith, and credit pledge of the city, and will be payable as a first budget obligation from any legal available funds.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, next up, we have three items from our Department of Public Service Director, Mr. Sargent here. First up is the HVAC mini-split system at the museum, historical museum's Carriage House. Kevin, feel free to take it away.
Thank you, mayor. As part of the renovation of the Carriage House, the Historical Commission has requested a small mini-split heating and cooling unit, which will allow for the safe storage of artifacts. Two quotes were received with flow air heating and cooling being the lowest at $4,498. Therefore, I am requesting the approval of flow air's quote in the amount of $4,498. Funds are available in the Historical Commission donation account.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Kevin. Next, we have the award of the contract for the Lathrip Street rehabilitation.
Okay, the next two kind of go together. On March 20th, this body authorized our city engineer to prepare specifications and bidding documents to solicit bids for the rehabilitation of Lathrip Street and the municipal parking lot at Birchwood and West Roads, on, on West Roads. On April 25th, Al's Asphalt submitted the lowest responsible bid of $403,525 for Lathrip Street and $59,840 for the municipal parking lot. Due to budgetary constraints, a change of the material was negotiated, reducing the bid prices to $368,525 and $35,859 respectfully. Therefore, I'm requesting approval to award both contracts to Al's Asphalt for the low bid price of $368,525 for Lathrip Street and $35,859 for the municipal-owned parking lot at Birchwood and West Roads. Funds are available in the local streets' capital improvement account and other fund, funding.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Kevin. Then last here, the award of the contract for the municipal parking lot rehabilitation in Trenton Printing.
Yeah, that kind of went hand in hand with that one.
Oh. I forgot that, yes. Just reading that in the separate thing. All right. Happy Monday, so, yep. All right, next up, from our deputy fire chief, we've got two different items here, the first being the turnout gear grant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Trent Fire Department, in partnership with other regional fire departments, was awarded through FEMA AFG Grants, turnout gear grant replacing every firefighter's turnout gear from head to toe. This grant saves the Trent community over $100,000 in equipment costs, with 10% matching funds as a requirement. With many vendors using the procurement of the entire ensemble in an open bid process by the grant host of the city of Southgate, the matching funds for Trent are to be paid to Southgate and then on to the awarded vendors. Previous matching funds towards the grant award have already been paid in lower amount of the helmets and boots. The current request of council is for the payment of the actual turnout coat and pants to Southgate in the amount of $7,616, which is available within the fire department budget under firefighting supplies. And as a.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, deputy chief. Next, we've got the five-year contract with Stericycle.
Yep, the fire department is currently under a five-year contract with Stericycle that ends on June 30th, 2023. Stericycle picks up and destroys our biohazard, medical waste, and used Sharps containers. Stericycle handles all of the waste from fire station pickup through disposal. While this is a five-year contract, the yearly price increase will not be more than 7%. Since this has been a recurring yearly expense, the money is already budgeted for and accounted for in contractual services. The total five-year expense will not exceed $5,463.43.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Benedetti?
Deputy Chief, I just wanted to, so the people know, and maybe we can get it out there still to them, you guys still pick up Sharps from the residents, or they can bring them to you guys if they're in approved containers, right?
Yes, as approved containers, they can drop them off to the fire station, and we also will provide them with containers.
And as part of all this stuff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none further, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, deputy chief.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Deputy Chief Davis here. Ordinance 812, amending, redacting, and adding additional language to the animals ordinance first reading. Mr. Deputy Chief?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm asking you to approve the first reading of our proposed changes to our animal control ordinances. On advice from legal counsel and in conjunction with our conversations with our animal control officers, we propose the listed changes below to the animal control ordinance to provide a better avenue for our ACOs to deal with animal-related issues. A detailed brief explanation for some of the changes below. We're striking some language that was, when we had a no-kill, or when we didn't have a no-kill facility. Now we have a no-kill facility with Woodhaven, so there's some language that's been stricken out of there. Animals are no longer to be destroyed or, destroyed or auctioned if they're given up, but they're to be put up for adoption. Section 14-116 more clearly defines vicious animals, as the two ladies who spoke tonight before this ordinance, the way our ordinance reads now, the only way vicious, an animal could be vicious is if it bites a human being. If an animal bites another animal, a domesticated animal, or kills a domesticated animal, according to the ordinance that we have in place right now, it's not deemed a vicious animal. So we're looking for that change. It's also, it's also amended to include that someone who keeps a vicious animal can be charged with a misdemeanor. And all of our, all of the citations that we write with the Trent Police Department are cited in the 33rd District Court. So all of our, all of our cases would go to the district court. So if someone were to keep, under this ordinance that we're proposing, if someone were to keep a vicious animal, like in the case we're describing here, they would be cited into 33rd District Court. If, there was also a question as to what would happen if the person failed to pay the fines, it would be the same as any other misdemeanor. If they failed to pay the fines or failed to appear in court at the appointed time, they could have a warrant issued for their arrest. So that's one of the things, that's one of the other things we're including. There's also some other issues about feeding wildlife, possession of exotic animals, and we act, we added a portion to address curbing of dogs because we found out we didn't have anything like that in our ordinance, so that's always pleasant. And we also added a, a part of a regulation to allow people to keep chickens and other fowl in certain, in certain zoned areas and with some certain restrictions. So I would ask that you approve the first reading of this, and we can make any amendments we need to make down the road here.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilwoman Pate?
Yeah, I just want to thank the residents that came to us to, to look at this ordinance, and then when I started reading it, to study what their issues were, there were so many things that we found were, you know, outdated, needed to be fixed, really, you know, a lot of eye-opening things. So I want to thank you and Chief Oakley, former Chief Oakley, and our administration and our lawyers who spent good amount of time on this and, you know, really wrapped their heads around it and helped us to modernize this for us, and I just really appreciate it. And I think you got, I got positive feedback today after they, you know, pursued it, or perused it, sorry, and, yeah, so I really appreciate your work on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bonkrooks?
Yeah, when you, you're talking about chickens.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're talking about what, or what do you think proposes or would be a good area that you allow chickens?
The proposed, the proposed area is anything that, anything is zoned R1 or R2, which is a single-family residential.
You'd allow it?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we, before, I don't know if you were here or not, but this was a few years ago, we had residents come down here, and they were adamantly opposed to it. Opposed to having in the residential areas, in people's backyards, the smell, the this, the that. They don't want chicken coops everywhere, so I would be opposed to that part of the ordinance, allowing it in a single-family residence. I mean, if they were out in the country, or maybe down Lathrip, out that way or something, maybe there's room for that kind of thing. But we had a lot of people that were opposed to chickens in people's backyards, and the noise, and the smell, and the this, and the that, that other cities have had. So maybe we should look into that one further.
That's, we can look into that.
Yeah, that's, that's a slippery slope, I think.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think we'll have Allen give some clarity on that to you later.
Yeah, because that was from a while ago. I don't know if Al was here at the time, or who was here, if this council was here.
I remember being here a couple of different times.
You were here, Steve.
Yeah, I just, I can't remember if it was when I was mayor or not.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think it was before that, because I think it was when Kyle was here.
Oh, yeah, and we definitely want to make sure any of those are addressed.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, there's cities that have had problems with that, and there's a lot of residents that came forward, didn't want it. So I just want to make sure we address that now, before that gets written in.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Yeah, we'll get that taken.
Alrighty.
So we'll have another reading too, so.
Great.
So is there any further discussion? Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Deputy Chief, so my question is, and I know, I, I read it thoroughly earlier. So with the chicken coops, isn't there an ordinance in there in regards to 20 feet?
Yes, ma'am, 20 feet from.
20 feet. From the property line, I believe, or a building?
Yes, what we say is a person shall not keep foul, or chickens are foul in any location on the property other than the backyard, and that no chicken house should be kept closer than 20 feet from any property line. There were some attempts in this, in this proposal to, to address the smell and.
And the rodents. I believe there was talk in there also wording.
Like rodent-proof chicken houses, yes.
Do you feel comfortable as far as, like, in regards to that particular ordinance, the way that it is planned out for? Because I also believe that within there, it talked about the certain size of the chicken coop too, can't be any bigger than, I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, chickens have to be able to have access to it during inclement weather, and, and they have to have a certain access to the outside, so they're not kept in the chicken coops. But I, I feel confident that, that it would, it would, if it was passed, and if people did keep chickens, there would be enough restrictions to where we could, we would be able to intervene if, if the situation got, you know, got to be where it was a nuisance. But like I said, this is the first reading, so if, if you as a council decide you don't want that part, that's, that's fine.
And then also in there, it talked about that is for personal use and not sale of eggs of any kind.
Correct, not, not sale of use, and it only allows for female, female chickens and other fowl, not, not for male roosters or.
Right.
Maybe call a male duck.
I say I don't want them at all. It's ridiculous.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, councilwoman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, thank you, deputy chief. Appreciate it. And next up, we have our wastewater treatment plant superintendent, Mr. O'Day here for the high voltage switchgear and transformer maintenance.
Good evening, mayor, council, fellow department heads and citizens of Trenton. Tonight, we have a little bit of electrical maintenance at the plant needed. There are three sources of electrical power at the wastewater plant. Two are provided from Detroit Edison, the third one is a 375 kilowatt transformer, I mean generator, I'm sorry. The two sources are primary and secondary. We normally are connected to the primary. If we lose primary, the switchgear will automatically switch over to the secondary source. And then after the secondary, after these switches, the, there are cables that go to three different areas of the plant, including three large transformers that step down 13,200 volts to 480 volts. So this equipment has been installed in 2000. It's in need of cleaning, testing, adjustment by service, by qualified service personnel that are qualified in that kind of work. At that point, I anticipate finding additional repairs that would be needed for this equipment due to the age of how long it's been serviced. So we've solicited quotes from three companies that are qualified into, in this field of repair and servicing, and we obtained two quotes from the three suppliers, and I would move to approve SM Services in the amount of, oh, my eyes, $10,860, and it would be out of the Electrical Equipment Maintenance Fund.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
It's okay. So when I was reading through this, if I read this correctly, there hasn't been any preventative maintenance since this was installed in 2000? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so what is the.
By perusing the records throughout the plant, yes. I mean, usually you would do it every periodically, which depending on the use and the criticality of it, it's three to five years.
Okay.
Things like that. I mean, these are large switches that move in and out with motors and whatnot. They can get dusty or grimy and gummed up and stuff, and maybe not work correctly. So that's the reason why you want to test them, to make sure they work when you need them.
Exactly, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Cool, thank you very much, John. All right, we have, looks like one late communication this evening. Call on our administrator, Mr. Creech here, DDA request for design of Elm West Jefferson parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Before you, you did get the information late this afternoon, and I apologize, this is totally on me for its tardiness. I was busy with a few other things, so. There's an attached proposal from Beckett and Raider for design and engineering for the city parking lot at Elm and West Jefferson. This was requested by the DDA, and I, I think it's a great jumping off point for them to. and I, I think it's a great jumping off point for them to be able to design something and implement something that they can fund and start to put their name on what is otherwise pretty mundane parking lot. So also, since this is professional services, we would be using Beckett and Raider, who do our city planning and stuff currently. They also help with the DDA area, and they've done all the work with Rotary Park Master Plan and the different things to try to weave everything together. And it would involve the same consultant. So request that you approve the attached proposal, permit the mayor to execute the agreement in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and funding would come from DDA money.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean. All right. So we'll go over, or Madam Clerk, do we have any other late items?
No, we do not.
Okay. We'll go over to our dispersments and statements and then our report. So I will defer to our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilwoman Pate.
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the authorized dispersments of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and two dollars and eighty-one cents.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you. I'd also like to move to approve the financial summary of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, the schedule of investments and cash on hand, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, the Civic Commission minutes, April third, two thousand twenty-three, the Downtown Development Authority minutes, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Historical Commission minutes, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and of also April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, the Library Advisory Board minutes of January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, March ninth of two thousand twenty-two, May eighteenth of two thousand twenty-two, July twelfth of two thousand twenty-two, September seventh of two thousand twenty-two, January fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and March first of two thousand twenty-three. Also, the Fire Department monthly report of April two thousand twenty-three, and the Police Department monthly report of April two thousand twenty-three.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Peruzzi?
Wendy, do we know why we're so late on some of those reports?
That I do not know. Perhaps the, somebody else does.
I don't, frankly.
Okay.
I know some of them just are, by the time they submit it, some, it takes them a while to formally adopt them. But the one or two in particular, I'm not sure. I can try and find out.
I'm just curious, it's, you know, almost a year and a half. I just didn't know what happened. So, thank you.
Oh, Donna?
Yeah, it was just my, I wasn't aware that they had to.
Oh, okay.
So. Thank you.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. All right. Anything else, Councilwoman?
That is all I think I have.
You as well, Wendy?
Yes, I think I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We will go on now to our other council business. I just had a couple very brief items today for everyone. I did want to let everyone know that on Wednesday, May thirty-first, at St. Paul's Lutheran Church at five thirty is the Peace Officers Memorial Service that they do there every year. I unfortunately won't be able to make it, but would encourage anyone that's available and able to attend to go. Again, that's Wednesday, the thirty-first at five thirty PM at St. Paul's here in Trenton. I know the Parks and Rec Department made their, you know, official online announcement and all that good stuff about the, the fireworks bringing, being back this year. They will be taking place the night of the Saturday of the Summer Festival. So not on our normal July fourth date, so just be mindful of that. But the Saturday, I believe that's the twenty-fourth, and it should be a great weekend downtown for everyone for that. And then lastly, I know over the last few months here, I've had each, both Mayor Pro Tem Pate and Councilman Peruzzi fill in for me at various ribbon cuttings, and I wanted to thank them. And then also certainly Councilman Benedetti for taking the last one here at the Farmer's Market kickoff last week and take that as an opportunity to remind everyone that every Thursday this summer from here on out, the downtown Trenton lot on Elm Street, that on Thursdays from two to seven is the Farmer's Market. And so go check it out and get some good stuff. And we've already got some really good reviews on that. But other than that, that is all I have this evening. So we'll start with Councilwoman Bunckerx tonight.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just one thing that's been brought to my attention, last couple of months, I've been getting a lot of calls from residents about their WOW service. We have WOW cable in Trenton and Comcast, whatever. But we've got some residents who have really, really been disgusted with the service that we're getting, they're getting from WOW. And I just so happen to be one of them. Because we're all comparing notes, and then people are calling me, and I'm thinking, what's going on here? Our cable goes out morning, noon, and night. You can be in the middle of a show, your cable's out five, 10 minutes, whatever. So I'm just wondering if the city of Trenton can send something to WOW corporate or whatever and say, look, we're not getting reliable service for our residents. I didn't realize it was such a problem. I thought it was my TVs.
Yeah.
I mean, I've had residents go out, buy three new TVs. I've had residents call me and, you know, miss all their favorite shows, and it just so happens to go out almost the same time, you know, every day. So it's got to be some kind of reliability problem. And I'm just wondering if we could reach out to them as a city and say, I mean, it can't, and then one, one lady called and her and her husband were scammed. A WOW truck pulled up in front of their house, lives down on the pier here, the condos, and said that they needed an upgrade for their system, and it would cost them X amount of dollars, a lot of money, to upgrade the system that they had to put in. So they let them in, gave them, and paid them cash. They insisted on getting paid cash. And it was a scam. It was somebody, and they had a WOW truck with, you know. So something's going on here that's not only that a problem, but also the reliability problem all of a sudden. And it's been going on for months, but people are, like I said, thinking it's their TVs. They're not, they can't believe what's going on. So maybe we could reach out to them and find out why we can't have reliable service for Trenton. And when you call them, you get the Philippines.
Yeah.
So, you know, the residents are kind of getting annoyed with this. And I, you know, I just happen to be one of them. So I know what they're talking about. They're not making this stuff up. So I think as a city, we need to address this and for our residents, because they have a franchise in our city.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And so we're, you know, we're the, I think, one of the responsible parties to see that if we're going to allow their service here, it's reliable. So you can't keep switching back and forth, one month, the ATV, one month, Comcast, you know, can't keep going around and playing games.
Get you ten dollars off each time, but yeah.
Yeah. So I just, for all those residents out there that have called me, I just want to let them know that I think, you know, we as a city should address it.
Yeah. No, we'll see if we can get any kind of answers or see if it's a broader reliability thing for the area. But yeah, absolutely. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Or the towers or something, what's going on, you know, I don't know. So.
Councilman Peruzzi, do you have something?
Yeah. Yeah. That one person that was scammed, did they notify the police?
That I don't know.
Well, I'm just, okay.
But I, I think they should.
Well, that's my next statement was going to be, in that event, that they should immediately notify the police and let them work that out.
I mean, that's scary when you allow somebody in your house and give them two to four hundred dollars, I think the price was. And then they leave, and then they called and said, why did I have to pay this? They said, we don't know nothing about that. We would never do that. So.
I think, yeah, a good reminder too to everyone to make sure you ask for some kind of identification, or if someone is selling something, that they have, you know, the proper licensing for the city.
Yeah, a permit or something. I mean, you pull up in a WOW truck, you think it's legit.
Yep.
Well, it wasn't legit, and they scammed two of our seniors.
Yeah.
So that, to me, is unacceptable.
Yeah.
So we got, I think we just got to, you know, address it.
We'll definitely let you know if we can get some, some answers on that.
Great. Thank you so much. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti?
Nothing really, except, you know, like you talked about the market, the weekend, Thursday market, that, yeah, it was pretty good to be down there. It was really crowded. I was surprised it wasn't real warm, man. It was a nice day, but not real warm. And they had a good turnout, and it seems like people are really interested in those things. One thing we do have to work on, I think the administrator might have to fix this, but we have to get a pair of scissors to cut those ribbons with. Because dude, if you saw that picture, it looked like I was carrying a bow and arrow into that thing.
If it makes you feel better, I brought my, the broken pair in today. So we'll work on getting that.
They, they thought that was pretty funny. I'm like, here you go, here's your scissors. They're like, what are we cutting? I go, all this little ribbon. So, yeah, it was a good time, and I appreciate it. Thanks for letting me do it.
Yep. No, absolutely. Glad you could do it.
And that's it, really?
All right. Councilwoman Pate?
You just got to pull that ribbon real tight before you, it works.
No, we're using it next time, trust me.
Okay. Thank you. So I just wanted to say that I saw Scott Cabot and also myself at the Down River Community Conference. Was it their fiftieth anniversary or something?
No, it's like forty-sixth or something.
It was some kind of.
Wasn't quite fifty yet.
Celebration. And it was very, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you were there a little bit at the LTL on there too.
Two ships passed, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a really interesting event. I mean, I learned a lot from this last presentation from Wayne Metro's programs and just, they had booths out from each one of the offices that they house there at the DCC. And I'm just blown away about the services they offer. So if anyone needs any, any services, any help getting jobs, or even getting clothing for going to interviews or skills, and veterans are there, and, you know, they're adamant about, you know, me, you know, coming back in and talking with them. So, you know, look on their website. I asked, you know, where, where do we find out all this information? Well, it's on the website. Great. Well, I would never have known, even though I'm really good at looking stuff up. So if everyone could check that out, I think they would also like to offer their services as well. And then I think that's, oh, I have, Tour de Tom is coming up on Saturday. Unfortunately, it does look like a little bit of rain, but we do have over seventy riders that are registered. You can probably still register. And just thanks in advance for support from our Police Department again to help us get safely through town. And hopefully, Mr. Mayor, you'll update me on whether you can be there. We'll have another ribbon cutting. I have some blue ribbon in my, in my car still, and I'll get those scissors. But we're looking to kick that off at nine o'clock. So come out and join us. And businesses have offered so many little coupons and things to get you to come back and shop in Trenton. So if you're a participant, you'll get a swag bag. And just took all those donations over from various businesses downtown and outside of town as well. So thanks to everybody who volunteered. I'll have that list next time I'll read out so I can give them credit. And then just thanks for having the students down here for the top ten. I've had many of them in my home over the years, and I've known them since they were babies, some of them, and their parents. And we've been through so much together. And it, this class is, just knocks my socks off. They're, they're so talented. And we're, you know, we're lucky to have them. And, and I hope they go out and see the world and come back in four years or less, or two or three, or whatever they're going to do, and come back to Trenton and share their talents. So congratulations to everybody, including my son. Thank you so much for your support.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. Great job. Councilman Peruzzi?
Yes, Mayor, you took a little bit of the thunder as far as the Summer Festival. So again, a reminder, it's June twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, fireworks on the twenty-fourth, which is a Saturday. My question is, if it's ran out Saturday, are they going to do them Sunday?
That is a good question. I know we've got Tim on. I cannot remember what the, the rain out date was. Tim, did you happen to have that by chance? I'm not sure if you have the rain out date for the fireworks.
Is he muted?
He is muted here. But we'll make that, if I, yeah, we'll make an announcement at the next meeting. I can't, yeah, I cannot remember off the top of my head if it was the Friday. There was a backup date. I just can't remember.
Just want people to know in case they don't surf the web.
Yep.
The next thing, on a personal note, I would just like to say, congratulations to my grandson who graduates. He's going to U of M Dearborn. He's Nicholas Arabian, so.
Yay, congratulations.
Congrats. And that's it? All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cabot?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to, you know, extend my congratulations to all those seniors and all those at Trenton High School on their accomplishments this year, and wish them the best in their, their next chapter of life, wherever that may take them. Also want to thank Jim Perry and the folks over at the DCC. I was at their, yeah, it was like their forty-sixth or forty-eighth anniversary, something like that. It's a lot of years that they've been serving the community and the things that they do for Down River, not just Trenton, but Down River as a whole, and try to, you know, instill collaboration between all the communities. It's, it's really impressive and really, a lot of people don't realize what they do. But, you know, you just kind of take for granted what they do there and the things they make happen. So Mr. Perry and all those over at the DCC, thank you very much for all your efforts. The last thing, I just wanted to say, thank you to Karen Saul and to Dean and to the mayor and all the department heads for the budget. You know, again, a great job and, you know, make it pretty seamless and easy. So thank you very much. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Well, I would just like to say congratulations again to the top ten students and to actually the entire class, graduating class. What an exciting time for them and their families and watching them and being able to go out into the world, like they said earlier. And also happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. All right. We'll go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
Sure. I'll just mention that City Hall will be closed on Monday, May twenty-ninth for Memorial Day, and the next regular council meeting will be on Monday, June fifth.
All right. Thank you very much. Our Assessor, Ms. Barnett, I don't think she's here tonight. Nope. We'll move right on along. And then our Treasurer, Mr. McCullough, do you have anything for us?
Oh, good. All right. Like that. Okay. We'll go to our department heads. Do any of our department heads have anything? We'll go to any in-person first, then on the Zoom here. Donna from the library.
Hi, Donna Jensen from the library. And I just wanted to invite everybody to the library during the summer. We're having all of our wonderful programming. And it's going to look a little different this summer. It's going to look a lot like it used to look. We're going to have programs for the kids every Wednesday at two o'clock, get them in the library, get them reading. There's going to be prizes and raffles and all different things for the kids to keep that reading going during the summer. And we hope to invite also all of the adults to come in and participate in the summer reading program also. And there will be an end of the year party for the adults again this year, after hours. And that's a lot of fun. So I want to invite everyone to come on out to the library. And also this summer, we're going to be continuing our regular programming. So all the preschool story time is going to continue through July, as well of our, as well as our book clubs, our Lego club. There's just so much going on at your library. And I just want to invite everyone to look at our website and our events calendar, because there's something for everyone there. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Donna.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other department heads? Not seeing anyone getting up and their hands on the Zoom?
So Tim says he can't, Zoom won't let him get on. So he says Sunday is the rain date.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you very much. So, yep. For those that might not have heard, Sunday is the rain date for the fireworks. That would be Sunday, June twenty-fifth, if the twenty-fourth doesn't work out. So thank you, Councilman. All right. Mr. Haley?
Yes, on behalf of Parks and Rec, who can't get on, you don't have another meeting before the Memorial Day Parade. So it's going to be that Saturday, the twenty-seventh, at ten o'clock, and would invite anybody to be along either West Road or over by the library. And it's rain or shine. It will, will go on that day at ten o'clock. And if anybody has questions, Parks and Rec, six, seven, five, seventy-three hundred would be the phone number for, for Parks and Rec if they need anything. But it's coming up real soon. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Paul. I appreciate that. Looking forward to that one too, and no rain that day, for sure. All right. Any other department heads? Not seeing any on Zoom. We'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, to speak, we'll go to any comment in-person first, then those on the Zoom. Anyone on Zoom, if you want to raise your hand under either the Participants or Reactions tab, would ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address. Direct all questions through me, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Let's see, here. All right. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn, seeing none. Moved and supported for adjournment at seven fifty-one. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. See y'all later.